Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, meeting of the Chapala Central School District Board of Education. The time is now 7:42. The board has been in executive session and I have a motion to resume the public meeting.
I'll move. Um, thank you. I will start by saying Happy New Year. Welcome back, back to school to 2022. Um, I also want to start by welcoming Allison Gardner back to the board. Although I have not yet had the opportunity to work with Allison, I look forward to doing so. Allison served on this board for nine years. During her tenure, she had to handle what was probably the worst scandal to face this district, and hopefully the worst one we will have to face as a district. I did not yet have a child in the district, so watched as a community member, but not as a parent in the district. I want to acknowledge that there were a handful of community members who reached out to us about Allison's appointment. Some were upset about it and others were in full support. I also want to note that there were several members of the board during that crisis, including Allison, who continued to serve past that time, including multiple board members who were reelected by this community and who continue to serve on this board and were and are exemplary and dedicated board members. I want to take a moment to reiterate our thought process on this appointment. Once we knew we would need to replace Vicki, we looked through our board policy and consulted with the administration, our attorney, and community members. As I've mentioned before, we were committed to appointing someone who had no intention of running for the board again come May, so as not to be perceived as in any way swaying the election. We also needed someone who understood the role of the board, could jump immediately into the budget process, and work with us to tackle the myriad issues, complex and mundane, facing the board over the next four months. We unequivocally believe Allison to be the best person to fill this role. Anyone in the district and on the board who had the opportunity to work with Allison in any capacity spoke to her competence, her work ethic, and her dedication to this district. Frankly, I hope my fellow board members feel about me the way everyone described working with Allison. So it is with the full support of this board that we welcome you back. We thank you for being willing to serve and look forward to working together for these few months. I know everybody wants to sort of say hi, so.
So mine will take quite a long story. I'd just like to welcome you back, Allison, to the Chapala Central School District Board of Education. We've had the pleasure of working together on behalf of the district, the children of the district, and the members of the community for five years together. I look forward to working with you again for four more months. Maybe four months in a week. Our district is very fortunate to have a former trustee of our district agree to again volunteer for personal time and services for our community. I know it will only be four months, Allison, but I know that you will dive right in and use your personal knowledge, your knowledge of the district, to support our administration staff, your fellow board members, and most of all, the children of our district and the community members who you serve in. Welcome back, Allison.
So without repeating too much, I will keep my welcome short. Allison Gardner, thank you and welcome. Your courage to continue, your willingness and dedication to serve, to commit yourself again and serving the CCSC families gives me the confidence to welcome you back on the board. I look forward to working alongside you for the next few months. Welcome.
Truly, I really wanted to speak to Allison's appointment tonight as Lauren and I are the only current board members who have previously worked with Allison. My first year on this board was Allison's last. Allison served this community as a board member for nine years and, as Hillary mentioned earlier, towards the end of her tenure dealt with one of the most disturbing and controversial issues that this board and this district has ever faced. Before being elected to this seat, I personally was quite vocal and critical of how that board handled this particular issue and crisis. So five years ago, I was in the position of having very publicly criticized the board that I was then subsequently elected to join. When I joined this board in 2017, Allison and I and our fellow board members sat down together, and despite our many differences, we successfully worked through countless issues affecting this district, ranging from the relatively routine to the extremely challenging. After working with Allison throughout this period of time, I want this community to know that I have a great deal of respect for Allison's professionalism, her dedication, her financial and policy expertise, and her commitment and willingness to dig deep and do the work that needs to be done, even under, at times, the most trying of circumstances. So I am 100% in favor of Allison serving out the remaining four months of Vicki's term, and I look forward to being her colleague once again. So thank you, Allison, and welcome back.
Thank you all for your kind words. I'm honored to be thought up to serve in this capacity even briefly. I know Vicki did very big shoes to fill. I look forward to working with those of you who have had the pleasure of working with before and getting to know those of you who haven't. And my commitment to this district is longstanding and as a very long-term resident of this community, I'm glad to be on this part.
Thank you so much.
So on to the pandemic. Um, Dr. Ackerman will address in a moment the newest set of changes to the regulations. But I want to take a moment to acknowledge a few things. We know now that the children are eligible to be vaccinated. Many people are ready for things to be back to normal. Right now, that is still very much out of our control. We are following New York State Department of Health regulations as we have been throughout the entire pandemic. I assure you that we are staying 100% on top of the ever-changing regulations, and as soon as we are given any leeway, we will have those conversations. We're clearly going to need to get through this Omicron wave for that to happen, but I am sincerely hopeful, as I know many of us are, that this is going to be the last of us. To our teachers and our students, although I doubt many of our students are tuning in, thank you. We know this is beyond challenging and frustrating and depressing and exhausting. I wish we could all make it better, but I want to let you know that we know how hard this is and we care. And to our administrators, both our central office administrators and our building administrators, thank you. Most people in this community have no way of knowing this, but our administrators were working the entirety of winter break. In fact, I don't think there has been a day since March 12th of 2020 that they haven't been working. Towards the end of our agenda tonight, you'll see that there's an SMOA, a supplemental memorandum of agreement to address the administrators' time off because they haven't had it, including weekends and vacations, that hasn't been impacted by having to do contact tracing and other COVID-related work. So thank you. These have been an extraordinary two years. Nobody's asking for any credit, but you all really, really deserve it. Your team, the building-level teams, and none of us want to still be here in COVID land, and we look forward to hopefully having all of this in the rearview mirror very soon. Tonight also marks the beginning of the budget process for next year. And once again, we're in a position where, who knows, right? Like, we are hopeful we will be back in a normal school year situation, but obviously, none of us can foresee that, and I know that the administration is taking all of that into account when presenting the budget, starting tonight and going forward through the next couple of months. I also want to give a really big thank you to the PTA, and I know that there are many PTA representatives here tonight who have, once again, come in, seen the lay of the land in terms of what's going on with COVID, restructured programming to have later start dates or different start dates, but is pursuing nonetheless to make sure that our kids have access to a lot of the great programs that they've come to really appreciate after not necessarily having access to them last year. So thank you for all the work that you guys have put into to make last-minute adjustments and make sure that our kids still have access to all this great programming.
That's, that is the end of my report. All right. Thank you. David, can you please pull up the community update? And as David's preparing to do that, I just want to thank Allison. I'm so grateful to you for volunteering to support this district. And our administrative team again, as we continue to navigate this challenging public health crisis, as we absolutely remain committed to supporting our students and their academic and emotional growth inside our school buildings. It's a very challenging time for our district, and thank you, Allison, for volunteering your time to come back to support us for the, for the next four months, and I wanted to share that with you also, happy you have it. Thanks to have you back. Okay, so let me begin by doing some COVID updates. One day, I won't have to do this, but today is not the day. All right, so you will see our vaccination rates are rising and they will continue to rise because many of our students are clearing the second shot two-week window. So we are almost at 70% in all of our elementary schools. We have kicked up to 80% in the middle schools, remember, fifth and sixth grade were not eligible, many of them for the vaccination until the window opened up for our students five to 12 years old. So at the next meeting, I anticipate these numbers will be much higher, which is good news for the district, it's great news for contact tracing and exposure. So I'm happy to report that our vaccination numbers continue to increase. I also wanted to share with you, I did, because it's hard for us to share quarantining numbers now because of test to stay, I'm taking a different strategy, and I want to share with you what our positive cases look like because we have so many of them. So since Saturday to today to this afternoon, we have about 100 new cases in the district. It's probably an even split between students who have a lab positive test, which means they've gone to the doctor, or they've come to the district, and we've done it in a way that's very formal versus a test that took place in their home. Either way, all these students are considered positive and they have access to remote instructions, and they have a return-to-school process that is similar. What the difference would be is that if a staff or a student tests positive on a home test, there's no contact tracing because there's no report generated to the Westchester Department of Health, which is their directive to us. Um, so I want to share with you, I just want to continue to update you. This week, we had the most number of people who participated in our afternoon testing on Monday that we've had since we began afternoon testing for all of our unvaccinated staff, vaccinated staff, and unvaccinated students. So we had about 119 people who came to testing, and, which was great. We had, of those 119, eight people tested positive. But I do want to remind our parents that while we're still in this uptake, we will allow any student vaccinated or not to be tested on Monday afternoon. We will absolutely continue this process, and then we have our required testing that will, will continue to happen as long as that regulation is in place. Next week, it's Tuesday, and we will send the link to register for that out on Friday with my COVID update for the week. So just because we're not sharing quarantine numbers anymore, you can get a sense of how many students are quarantined by the average number of students we are seeing for test to stay. So what I would like to share with you in, in this chart is that you may notice that while we have many more cases, we have a consistent number of students participating in tests to stay that's not necessarily off the mark compared to our weekly averages, and that's because more students are vaccinated. So anyone who's vaccinated and there's an exposure, you don't have to test to stay. So while it may seem like there's an average of 21 students, and that may seem a lot, we have many more cases with more exposure, but less students requiring to quarantine because their parents are making the decision to have them vaccinated. Okay, so I had sent out an email this morning with new COVID procedures. Just a brief summary, basically, the isolation period and quarantine period for positive students and for positive students and for students who need to quarantine because they're unvaccinated has been reduced to five days. And so there's some language around when that five-day period starts, depending on whether you're asymptomatic or not. So if you don't have symptoms, it's great. You, you take your test the day after your test is day one, and then you return. And then day five is five days later, you return on day six, you fill out a form, which we'll show you in a second, and you come back to school. If you are symptomatic, it's a little bit more complicated because your day five clock starts depending on when your symptoms began. And all this is very clearly outlined in our document online under a COVID section of our website, but it's also in the anticipation form you need to fill out when you are ready to send your child back to school or when our staff is ready to come back to school. So people very clearly have an understanding of how to follow the guidance so we make sure we're only having students and staff come back who meet the criteria. So I just, David, if you can just really quickly bring up the form and you can see if David just goes down, we're collecting some demographic information, so then if you move all the way down to the bottom, we have people inputting whether or not they had symptoms, how they took their test. And then we have, if you keep moving down, we have some date language associated with this and some verbiage right from the Department of Health guidance so people know exactly when is appropriate for their child to return to school based on whether or not they're symptomatic. And then our doctors helped us tease out, you know, what, one of the the considerations is when you are symptomatic, you can come back to school if your symptoms are improved, but there's certain things that can't be going on in your body for you to walk back into this building. So the form really clearly outlines what that is supposed to look like, but I would encourage your parents, if you have any questions, certainly just call the nurse or you can call your building principal. Now, for a child or faculty member to come back into the building, this form needs to be approved by, for our students, this form needs to be approved by the nurse and then the building principal so we have a two-pronged check process to make sure that the forms fill that correctly and everyone coming back into the building is safe. And then for our staff, our principals are actually approving those forms because of some confidentiality restrictions that we have in place in terms of protecting privacy rights of our staff. So we, we did this today. It worked out pretty smoothly. I want to thank Josh for developing this system very quickly because we got the guidance last night. We had everything ready to go this morning. We met with our principals and nursing teams at 9:30, and then they started approving students to come back to school. And so I just want to thank them, and I want to thank Josh, and it was, it was very smooth today, which I was very pleased about. So hopefully, as we move forward, we'll be in a better shape to help support our families that were experiencing a positive COVID person in the house. David, can you move back to my, who are COVID positive? So now I just want to talk about our unvaccinated students and staff. If there's an exposure, quarantine has been reduced to five days, and those students will be able to test to stay and come to school on, on any day within those five days that schools and sessions. They just will not be able to go to the extracurricular activities, and then they need to monitor their symptoms from day six to 10, but they'll have no school restrictions placed on. So I do want to just affirm, we have some practices that will continue to remain in place. The first is that if students are in a household with someone who's COVID positive and they are unvaccinated, they need medical clearance to return to school or a release form from quarantine from the Westchester Department of Health. And the reason that we're keeping that practice in place is because we can't determine whether or not someone is, has received their last exposure when they're in the home. So we feel like this is the safest way at this point for us to move forward with students who are in that situation. And then, as of right now, the guidance still requires students who are, and staff who are symptomatic, whether they're unvaccinated or not, to have a lab confirmed negative test. It's not, we cannot accept home tests in this situation. Okay, so I just want to shift, and I'd like, Jamie, just to talk about our next steps in terms of our special education audit.
So PCG has completed their report and has shared it with the board already. And Matt Karabkin will be joining us at the January 26th board meeting to present the findings of the report to us. He will be here virtually and has asked if the board would forward any questions to him in advance so that he can prepare them and include them in the report, but there will also be time during the meeting for questions at that time.
Right, and so we're also going to see, depending on what's going on in terms of the virus situation that has to come on site. So we, we hopefully will have a representative from PCG onsite presenting to the community, but we are committed to having that presentation of her on that day, so we'll have to see where we are in terms of the virus. But we'll be sharing some feedbacks, requesting that they actually send someone here, like, as we did with Insight. Also, the same process we followed with Insight, we will follow with PCG. So just as a reminder, Insight had presented to the board in December. Their final report and presentation is now on our website. So PG, PCG will report, will present to the board at our next meeting, and then before the February meeting, we will post their presentation and their final report online for our community to review as well. Tony, did you want to share an update as to where we are with Insight? Because they have also done some additional work since they've presented to the board.
Sure. Thank you, Christine. Actually, yesterday, Inside Education presented to all our faculty, K-12. They facilitated at the faculty meetings via Zoom to accommodate everyone, and they provided the teachers an overview of all the faculty, an overview of the report, but also they offered some concrete examples of work that we might be doing, the teachers might be engaging in as we move forward. Insight will also be joining us on January 25th. They'll be meeting with the leadership team, the district leadership team, to begin planning actual steps based on the audit report and the recommendations that we can actualize here in district. So we'll be excited to share some updates in the, in the coming meetings.
Okay, and that is the end of the superintendent report. Is there any questions on anything I presented before Andrew and I do the budget overview? Okay, so we just need to, Andrew is actually attending Berkeley, so we just need to get set up, so if you could pull up Andrew and the budget overview, I'll start and then Andrew will. All right, so tonight is the night where we just share with the board and the community our thinking as we begin to develop the budget for the 2022, 23 academic year. So this is our budget preview. We don't present hard numbers. We don't share where we think our levy limit will be, but we do share with you some of the factors that are going into consideration as we engage in the budget development process. I'm having a hard time moving this. Need to move this for me, Josh, or? Okay, so Andrew, did you want to go over the budget development calendar?
Sure. This is a calendar that's fairly typical for most school districts, and certainly it was used in this district before. So in the fall, we start talking with you.
Andrew, I can't hear you. You gotta just turn me up.
All right.
Okay, try again.
How are we doing now? Is it better?
No. Hold on a second. They're going to the booth. You ready, Vinnie? Okay, try again, Andrew.
How are we doing now?
That's great. Okay, good.
All right, wonderful. So this is a typical budget development calendar for school districts. As you all have seen this probably before, it's very similar to last year's calendar. In the fall, we talk with the administrators about our, our initial budget kind of discussions of what we think we need to do for the coming year. I start doing some financial projections with my, my team in the business office to kind of get a sense of where we're headed from a financial perspective, based on kind of our existing staff or existing budget items. Through December and February, a lot of the, the budget requests for our buildings and departments are all consolidated through my office and shared with Christine, and we deliberate on those. As we kind of sort through the details, we certainly will end up with a superintendent's proposed budget that we'll share with the Board of Education in late February or at the March Board of Ed meeting. March 1st is the property tax cap deadline where we need to at least put in our initial formal tax cap projection for the coming year, and that has to get filed with the state comptroller's office. In March through April, we'll have some budget work sessions where we can share our budget development thoughts and take questions from the board and perhaps the community as well. And in April, the board by law needs to adopt a proposed budget that will go to the voters prior to the, to the vote in May. In May, we'll have the public notice that goes out, and on Tuesday, May 17th, across New York State is our annual school district budget and board election votes. So we'll see that for the coming year.
Yeah, I got it. In our budget planning process, we obviously anchor our work in two different areas. First is we anchored in the board's strategic questions, so we have three this year. The first talks about offering our program in a way that's fiscally responsible. And then the second and third question is addressed, making sure that our teaching and learning approach is progressive and rigorous and supports creative thinking, and that we're also supporting the social-emotional learning of our, of our children. So this is the backdrop of what, what we're thinking about in terms of developing our budgeting process. But then in terms of this year, we have some nuances associated with our budgeting process that are directly related to COVID. So some, some of what our, our thinking is, as we're planning forward, we want to make sure that we are putting students at the center of every decision and that we're presenting a budget that preserves and expands our program, both academic and social-emotional, that we make adjustments based on our needs due to the impact of COVID. And we, of course, are committed to revisiting our class sizes, just like we did last summer, to make necessary adjustments. We prioritize what we need to do to maintain our buildings. We also are mindful of our residents that are concerned about their property taxes when we, when we're budgeting, and then we align to our district's strategic plan. So just as a reminder, we have six priorities that we're working on. These have been identified by a group of stakeholders from wider community inputs, but we are focused on our spaces, our assessment practices, our social-emotional learning curriculum, K-12, academic program alignment, particularly in our K-8 buildings, where we have multiple buildings teaching subject areas across, in different sections of the community, using our technology to personalize learning. And then our, our additional strategic area that was added last year is creating culturally, cultivating equitable, affirming, and culturally responsible learning environments for our students. And then, of course, most of our budget and the impact of our planning is heavily driven by, of course, our programs, our class sizes, our infrastructure, and then our contractual obligations. And as we get further into the budget process, you'll see how, where our, our funding is primarily tied to, and for the most part, it's strongly tied to our personnel. But that's in a later presentation. So Andrew, do you want to go into this slide?
Sure. This is a slide that, that was shown last year for certain. There's many inputs that we, we need to consider as we're building our budget. We, we take everything from, from citizen input, as Christine noted. Those, those community who have students in the schools or maybe who do not and have concerns about the, the tax burden, we, we have to look at our staff numbers and enrollment and how our staff support our students. We have to look at external factors like CPI, state aid. All, all the items that are listed on this slide are, are things that, that we consolidate into a proposed budget that comes from the superintendent and then is eventually adopted by the Board of Education. On the next slide, I think Christine and myself and the, and the administrative team put together some operating standards. So Christine, would you like to go through those?
Right, so we actually revisited these and made some adjustments based on, we have a new leader, you know, we have a new leadership team, and so we, since I've been here, we've had similar operating standards, but I think it's just as a strategic question for, from the Board of Education of all, we wanted to evolve our planning process and what we're thinking about in terms of how we're preparing our budgets. So we're, we're mindful of creating class sizes with enrollment that allows us to support individualized and small group instruction, expanding our course, offering aligned with our six strategic initiatives, and you'll, you'll see that as we move forward in our planning specifically for the high school. We are continuing our commitment to reimagine our spaces to reflect the 21st century professional world. We're aligning our building schedules to maximize the use of our professional staff, particularly at the middle level in elementary schools. We are, of course, always concerned about maintaining, maintaining the integrity of our physical plant, supporting a robust extracurricular program, meeting all of our contractual obligations that drive a majority of our budgeting, improving our communication structures to support the needs of our families and the broader communities. And as we go through and share with you different aspects of our technology presentation, you'll see some of that work, some of our work and what we're thinking about in terms of moving. Some of our work and what we're thinking about in terms of moving forward. And then, of course, addressing necessary use of our funds due to the pandemic needs through conservative use of our fund balance and reserves moving forward, responding to the needs identified by our administrative team, faculty and staff. Now, he's also known, he's done a number of audits this year. So addressing areas for improvement identified in those audits, driving some of our budgeting decisions. We have some areas that Joe Grumondo will present to you that we're concerned about in our buildings that need remediation. So we're thinking about that as we prepare our budget. Making sure that we continue to support cutting edge technology in our schools and in our offices. And then, of course, maintaining the teaming approach at the middle level. I I know that we always put that in there, but that's really important for us and that drives a lot of our staffing. So I want to make sure that that is a part of our thinking right out front and how we're planning for the next school year. So Andrew, why don't you take the next slide?
Yeah, this is a bit of a different view from from what's been shown before. But it's the same kind of key information is is where has our budget been going over the last several years? So from the left hand side, 2016, 2017, all the way out to the right, which is the current school year, 2021, 22. This current school year, you'll see we have a budget of $130.5 million. And that was a 1.73% increase on the budget on the levy, which is the budget offset by other incomes such as state aid and use of fund balance. You know, we had a tax levy of $113,934,076, which is just over 2%. And that was within the tax cap, which is an important budget kind of dynamic over the last several years. If you look at the start to finish from 2016 all the way to 2021, the overall average budget increase was about 1.7%. And the increase in the levy was about 1.2%. If you go back actually one year prior, which I did not put on the chart, those numbers are actually even slightly lower. This was a a low tax levy year in the year prior. And this, the tax levy increases were averaging between, or excuse me, the budget increase low kind of point 2.7, I think, was one of the lowest years, up to a high of about 2.93% over that period. As you can see, though, the trajectory of school budget is the long gone of the days of 10 and 12% budget increases. And that those are just not sustainable anymore. On the next slide, we talk about some of the budget known impacts. Christine, would you like me to take those as well?
Yep.
All right. So one of the key important pieces of information we look at, right, is our enrollment, because that drives much of the cost. It is what we do in educating students. Overall, district wide, the enrollment for next year is going to be relatively flat. However, though, there are some grade level dynamics that we need to take into consideration. And certainly, within the grade levels, building level dynamics. So at our elementary schools, we see a slight increase. In the middle school level, we see a decrease and then an increase again at the high school. And that just has to do largely with the the dynamics of our cohorts as they move from grade to grade year over year. So we're going to make some adjustments in our budget for that at each of the buildings that are impacted by those higher enrollments. We've had contractual obligations that were settled prior to this school year. So for our administrators, our office staff, our custodial staff, our TAs and our nurses, we know what the contractual obligations will be for those contracts. E R E R S, the employees retirement system, which covers our clerical staff and our custodial staff. Their mandatory employer contribution rate is projected to decline. That decline is a substantial one, from about 16% down to 11.6, which is a really good thing based on the investment outcomes of that retirement system, which is managed by the state controller. Our debt service is now final. There's been no new debt issued since last year's budget. So we are now kind of in in steady state mode for the debt service schedule that is outstanding for all of the different bonds that have been issued in years past. So those will be factored in. Assessment growth, which is an important new factor in the tax cap calculation, say new. It's been there since the beginning of the tax cap. But those of you that understand school budgeting prior to the tax cap, this was a new dynamic. We we know that number at 0.24%. So in our budget presentations, I'll take the community and the board through what that impact is for our tax cap calculation. The Health Benefits Consortium, which we are a part of with several other school districts within the region, have voted and settled on a 6% premium rate increase. This is a dynamic that was hotly debated by the consortium. And will have a financial impact on our budget making decisions going forward. Equalization rates are published by the Office of Real Property Tax Services. They are used as we try to apportion our tax levy between the towns of Mount Pleasant and Newcastle. So those are finalized now, and those will go into the tax rate calculations. They don't necessarily affect our budget, but they do affect how that budget gets allocated out to homeowners. And as of today, CPI was finalized for for the period which will affect the tax cap. The tax cap caps what that CPI can do in terms of the tax levy at 2%. But inflation was above that at 4.7%. So certainly, we're going to see costs rising at a at a level that's beyond perhaps the tax rate when you look at the cost of inflation. Some of the unknown factors that we have is that tax cap number. There's really very few dynamics left for us to figure out. So we'll work through that with the the budget making process. But facilities projects will be the the single piece that we need to to settle on before we finalize what the tax cap implication will be. And I'll talk more about the tax cap in just a moment. We are in contractual negotiations with our teachers, right? That was a one year contract extension for the 2122 school year. So Christine, myself and the administrative team are working with the teachers on an extension for for their contract. State aid is going to be included in the New York governor budget process. So hopefully, we'll have those numbers relatively soon, so we can get some good pictures on what our state aid will look like. Transportation costs are certainly rising. Inflation, as I noted earlier, is a direct impact on our contract for transportation with Chapco Transportation. Special ed placements, we need to finalize I E Ps with our students with disabilities. And that will drive a significant portion of the special education budget, where those students will be educated, how they will be educated and supported to their academic program will be an influence on our budget. Assess valuations are how the the tax levy is both split between the town of Newcastle and Mount Pleasant, but then also how that levy is allocated to to homeowners. So once that finalized assessed value is published, we'll have a better idea of what our tax rate will look like for the coming year. And then the teacher's retirement system has projected a contribution rate between 10 and 10 and a half percent. But that the rate has not been finalized, and it should be finalized hopefully in the in the next few months. So we can nail down what our mandated contributions are to the New York State Retirement System for our teachers. That's different than our civil service staff, clerical and custodial, which we do know the rate for. I talked about inflation. I don't mean CPI. I really mean inflation in terms of the cost of goods that we purchase. I think every one of us have gone out to the grocery store or the gas pump, and we've seen costs rising. So we're trying to see what those rising costs are going to do to some of our purchases throughout the district for both goods and services. And we're starting to see some of those as we request quotes for our coming school year budget. And then, as Dr. Ackerman mentioned, COVID, the needs and requirements that we will have going forward are a bit gray, and they're changing what seems like daily here for us. So we need to to kind of nail down what our assumptions will be in that area. So I mentioned the property tax cap a few minutes ago, and in this slide I put together, because I want to make it very clear that the cap is not necessarily a cap on what we're allowed to raise. It's it's what we need to do in order to raise it. So the tax cap is a cap on the amount the school district can raise with a simple majority vote, 50% plus one vote. If we exceed that cap, then we have to go to a super majority, a 60% or better vote outcome. So so it's not a 2% tax cap. It's going to be very evident this year that it seems that way because of the CPI cap that we have. But that's just one of the components. Also included in the tax cap calculation are allowable exclusions. And the largest piece for us is the exclusion for debt service and capital expenditures. So as I mentioned earlier, we know our debt service, our transfer to capital projects, any cash projects we do, that will influence the final number for our allowable exclusions. Once we have that finalized, we will then be able to to share with the community and the board what our tax cap is and what the threshold will be for us to get a successful budget passed with that levy. If we do have an unsuccessful budget vote, the tax cap does, tax cap law limits us at what we can raise next year to the current year's tax levy. In previous years, there was a budget implication. It's not a budget implication anymore. It is a levy implication. So if there are other increases or decreases in revenue, such as state aid or what have you, that may influence where our budget can go from year to year.
Okay, at this time, just, are there any questions that the board has that they want? Andrew, I answer or any particular areas you want us to think about as we plan forward and get ready to present to the recommended budget of our next presentation?
I just had a question in terms of COVID expenses, which we all wish were not so prevalent in this budget. But as we talk about it down the road, not not now, but whether there will be a breakdown of like throughout this year and and what was spent, where where the allocation came from. And, you know, how we were able to do this, which I'm very thankful that we were to be able to stay open. But, you know, I just wanted to maybe ask if that'd be added in, because I think it's very important for the community to see how that money gets spent.
Yes, we can certainly do that. I do want to share with you, share with you immediately that our expenses this year were nowhere near what they were last year, because we had a higher staff to support the cohort model rate, but we can certainly add that in our next.
I just think it would be helpful for the community to see that.
Yeah, maybe we'll do, we'll share what they were last year compared to what they are this year.
That'd be great.
And then what some of our needs may be next year.
And I know it's projections, and we don't know, you know, we never know what's coming, the pipe from one date to another. But I I think that that would be good for everyone to see.
Anything else?
Andrew, good question. What was last year's health insurance premium? You said this year it's six points.
I I don't know what the the increase was, because I wasn't part of that consortium of a prior district, and I apologize. But we we spend about 13.6 million on health insurance in the current year's budget.
Can we, can we get that percent from last year?
Sure, I'll find that and I'll get it for you. Absolutely.
And then you said, we're weighing on contributions for E R S and T R S or just one?
Just T R S. So E R S is actually declining, but T R S is anticipated to increase from 9.8% right now to about either 10 or 10 and a half was the range that they've issued.
Okay. And then you mentioned state aid. I mean, some years we wait until what? March 38th to get state aid. What do you, what do you think we're going to have this year?
I I think with a governor who's running for election, I think there's going to be one, going to be some clarity that that she's going to want to have around the budget process. And I think there has been a commitment to education by the legislature. So I suspect we'll have some inkling of what our numbers will be well in advance of the board adopting the budget.
Because, you know, over the past years, it's always been we wait, we wait, we wait, right? And it's hard for you guys, hard for us, hard for the community to understand where we're going until the state decides what we want to work with.
Warren, the health insurance premium last year at this time was 1.5%.
It's up to six now. Okay, that's significant. That's it for now. I guess some more. Thanks, Andrew.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Andrew. I am, I have a question about the consumer price index increase and how that sort of interplays. And I know that that you said that that's different from just regular inflation. But there's been, you know, it's been all over the news that the CPI is like going through the roof relative to the the last few years. But that number has now been set. And and I'm guessing from what you've said that it actually doesn't matter, because it's higher than the cap anyway. So even if that were to increase, it wouldn't impact the cap number that we're dealing with.
Right. Yeah. So CPI is a is an indication of inflation. It's it's what's actually happening year over year, right? So from the tax cap perspective, which is CPI for a specific period of time is what's used in in our tax cap calculation. That is now set. We all knew it was going to be above 2% and therefore it's capped at 2%. So we we know that that variable in the tax cap is now set. However, CPI is used in in two other ways, right? In in some of our contractual agreements with vendors, there's a CPI clause that that will, you know, increase their costs by CPI. The other is true as well. CPI is calculated based on actual rising prices. So we're starting to see as we try to purchase different things, whether they're building supplies for in our maintenance departments or paper, right, for our printing, all those costs are rising. And and that cost is actually happening now, but it's probably going to continue to happen as we try to budget for next year.
And do you think we need to build in any sort of buffer? Like, I I guess what I'm sort of concerned about is people seem unclear whether this is something we can rein in or something that six months from now is going to be way worse than it is now. So is there any way to make sure that that come, you know, next October, we're not finding that we didn't have enough in the budget to to sort of deal with these purpose increases?
Every business official wants to put lots of buffers in the budget, because they're always afraid of overspending, right? So I'm I'm no different. I I think we are going to have to look very carefully at at what our costs are this year, where there is maybe some room for us to trim back of some of those buffers to help pay for what we know is going to be cost increases this year. I I don't think that this is a a time where we're going to see large abilities for us to spend money and still be within the tax cap, unfortunately, because I think a lot of our supplier costs are going to drive increases in in those areas where we might have been able to to move money around to pay for things like COVID expenses, right? And we're going to have to either plan for them or or just hold off on spending.
Okay, thank you. At some point, we'll probably have to a very serious conversation about our roots and some building and construction projects that we just won't be able to budget for in our regular budget. But we're not there yet. Eventually, we're going to have to have those conversations. Any other questions? This is just basically for the community that's just watching, just a preview.
I had one last thing, sorry.
I'm sorry. And then the board's questions help us plan for future presentations. So go ahead.
No, just and and Andrew touched on it early. Sorry, I forgot to ask this about the assessment growth factor, because that is something that sort of jumped out on me on the known impacts. And is that, who fixes that? And is that related to the, you know, assessment growth on our properties in town? And how does that impact our budget and and why this year not? That why, like, why are we talking about it this year versus perhaps other years that I I don't recall being on the in the forefront?
It it's 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 part of the tax gap. It always has been. It is the piece that you may have been familiar with in terms of property development and growth, which allows for the the levy to increase. Because as property is developed, you assume that there's more, perhaps more students becoming, you know, members of our school district. So we'll need to be able to to support them. So that has always been a factor in the tax cap. Last year, that rate was 0.62 in terms of our overall assessed value. This current school year, or sorry, this coming school year, it'll be 0.24. So it's it's showing growth. It's just less growth than the prior year. And and that is one of the initial factors that's used as we take our current year's tax levy and project what the cap can be for the following year, along with all the exclusions and CPI and the other factors that are in that calculation.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I didn't answer your question either. It's reported by by the assessors. It's reported to to the state, and the state calculates what that number will be.
Josh, can you pull back up our presentation, because I I do want to go over the calendar? With the board moving forward. Okay, so this is our budget budget preview. On the second, we'll present the budget preview. And then on the 16th and 23rd, we'll do the components of the budget. And that's where Adam and Josh and Jamie and Jeff and Joe Grumondo will come and speak to you about their section of the budget in terms of their planning. And on the 28th, we'll have our P C A budget form, that'll be moderated by Peggy, our president. So thanks Peggy for that. And then on the 6th, I'll be presenting a budget to your considerations for adoption. And then we have our hearing and an opportunity to vote. Okay, and that is the end of the budget preview. So tomorrow, we'll have this up on the website. We'll start our our budget section of the website, so people know exactly where to go for information. And if if there are any questions as we move forward in the budgeting process, you can always reach out to Andrew and I, or you can email the board directly, and we'll we'll help you and we'll answer your questions. So thank you. And that is the end of superintendent's.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
That brings us to.
That brings us to committee report. I will jump in and say we had a policy committee meeting last Thursday, which was the sixth. I'm not going to go into too much details, but the policies we discussed are on the agenda. We'll talk about them if that makes sense, Warren.
Yep.
Get to that. So that's all I've got.
Facilities, we're having a building walk through with the facilities advisor committee and the health and safety committee on Tuesday, the eighteenth. We'll primarily probably agree with and maybe about to start with. And we still have to, we have to schedule a building walk through with the board still.
I also want to share for the, the board and the community, we're starting, next week we'll start to put the walls in place in, in the greenhouse at really, that could be exciting.
I just, just this morning, actually, I'll weigh in that there was a sports booster meeting. Some of the eight months of the sports boosters. There's not a whole lot to report. We just come back obviously from break. But they are talking through, you know, changes that have been made for winter sports, what we can look ahead to for the spring. There'll be a mascot. Well, then we'll see what they're on. But one of the things that, that they've talked about, that they're hopeful about, I know in the fall, they had a very successful event with the whole dearly zone and the community event around homecoming and trying to see, there's talk of possibly doing that in the spring. With spring sports and that can garner more community involvement, high school involvement when things open up hopefully again, if you can do that safely. And they just talked about ways to sort of support our athletes during a challenging time. So I think they're doing a really good job of that. And they are starting to get some of the the equipment funded through their, their training development fund that we had approved. Sorry, so that's been a successful program for them. And that's that.
Okay, so that brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comments and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please come down to the microphone and tell us your name.
Good evening. My name is Maya Sekic. My son is a typical example of a student forced out of Chapala Central School District. He attended Chapala Schools kindergarten through eighth grade. Even with an IEP, he never received reading services or reading instruction based in science. And consequently, he fell further and further behind. It is estimated that twenty percent of children have dyslexia. My son is one of them. He was classified and given an IEP in first grade. Unfortunately for him and the others who learn differently, CCSD continues to be committed to Teachers College Reading and Writing Program and Lucy Cockens Units of Study, a reading and writing program not based on science. He was evaluated with a Wyatt III in fourth grade. We were told, don't worry that his spelling is terrible because he can use spell check. Don't worry that he has an inability to decode because he can use pictures to guess new words. And amazingly, his reading comprehension was reported in the sixty-fifth percentile. I wish I had known the evaluation results were not reported with fidelity. In sixth grade, he was placed in a new demoralizing social studies literacy class, otherwise known as the sped class. Subsequently and repeatedly, a Fontis and Pennell assessment referred to as the DRA reported his reading comprehension at grade level. We later learned the DRA was not administered or reported with fidelity. An independent reading evaluation showed he was actually years behind. With this knowledge, thankfully, we were able to place him out of district where he was provided the science of reading. Since two thousand and nineteen, Lucy Cockens Units of Study has been in the news throughout the United States and deemed a deeply flawed program. Using pictures to guess words is not teaching children to read. Many states have removed Lucy Cockens Units of Study from their approved core reading curriculum, and they've also required teacher training in the science of reading. To learn to read, students need to be able to do two things. Decode written words and comprehend what those words mean. This requires explicit systematic instruction and practice over time. In November twenty twenty-one, Emily Hanford wrote, influential authors Fontis and Pennell stand behind disproven reading theory. The education professors doubled down on a flawed approach that encourages pitchers in context to read words. Hyman, their publisher, faces harsh criticism. I will, just one moment, please. Thank you. Hyman is also the publisher for Lucy Cockens Units of Study and Teachers College Reading Program.
Hold on one second. Here at time, we can vote to extend your time. Just give me one second. Can I have a motion, please, to extend the speaker's time for an extra minute? I'll move. On favor? Okay, you have an additional minute.
Great, thank you. Tonight, item six point one, the Board of Ed is acknowledging a contract with Hyman. I respectfully request the Board of Education and Administration to consider discontinuing any future relationship with Hyman, Lucy Cockens, and Fontis, and Pennell. Let's begin discussing a plan to bring science-based reading and writing general education curriculum to all students and professional development to our hardworking teachers. Imagine Chapala Central School District leading the way in New York State to provide high-quality, evidence-based instruction to all students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Dunn, and I too had a dyslexic student attend Chapala Central School District. Unlike Maya's son, my student was not identified with a learning disability in reading until just before eleventh grade, when testing showed a reading comprehension years below grade level. He will never be considered a fluent reader, but with diligence and significant effort to implement compensatory strategies while reading and rereading and rereading and rereading a bit more, he can comprehend high-level texts. Testing shows it takes him an hour and a half to read and comprehend what it would take the average fluent reader twenty minutes. While we would have, while we would have had the privilege to tutor, we did not have the knowledge that tutoring was desperately needed. Today, we can only imagine what critical skills for success he would have acquired had Chapala Central School District led the way in New York by implementing a science-based literacy curriculum. I too hope the district will begin discussing a plan to bring a science-based reading and writing general education curriculum to all students and professional development to our hardworking teachers. I prefer not to imagine CCSD leading the way. Instead, let's be the leader in equitable education by saying goodbye to Lucy and implementing the science of reading for all learners in Chapala Central School District. And on a separate note, I'm respectfully requesting PCG's report, special ed report, be released to taxpayers to promote transparency in this process and stakeholder involvement. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Parker and I'm a parent of two daughters here at the Roaring Brook School District. I think.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone a little more? I'm sorry.
Try to raise it. How's that?
Much better. Thank you so much.
For those that didn't hear the first time around, my name's Matthew Parker and I'm a parent here in the Chapala Central School District. I think we can all agree that Omicron has really changed the game. You could have done everything right and this wave shows you there's a good chance you're going to end up getting COVID. This variant is causing all sorts of rule changes in the right direction for normalcy in many industries and professions across the globe, with the exception of schools. While it's great, we are physically in school and we've had some minor improvements. Most of the school rules are stuck as if it's still twenty twenty with no off-ramp to lift them, even with extremely high vaccination rates among Chapala staff and students. We still implement outdated, improper and ineffective safety measures like Plexiglas at lunch, forehead thermometers, or my favorite, taking the temperature of a student's arm getting on the bus through a thick winter jacket. All of this and many other safety rules still in place, for a lack of a better word, is theater. We continue to follow them because the state and county have mandated them or the CDC is recommending this. Tonight was the start of selling a school budget, but people don't move to Chapala to reject school budgets. The priority and focus here should be selling to the parents in the community how the start of the twenty twenty-two school year is going to look a lot more like twenty nineteen and what the district is proactively doing to get there by questioning the state and local government and old and outdated rules. The vaccines out for all school, the vaccines are out for all school-aged kids and two years of data backs what works and what doesn't. Now it's time to push back on each of the rules implemented. The government is not going to move as fast as Omicron and we need to put, we need to end up pushing them. Maybe we are pushing back, but it's not transparent to the community. So please disclose it so we can help craft the message as we are working with the teachers daily. If we aren't pushing back, why not? Prior to Omicron, a large number of community parents and students were afraid to speak out of school rules for fear of being labeled. Lose close friends or shunned in social circles. Now a ground swell is building as evident on the community Facebook page. Conversations are being had at playdates, birthday parties, and external sporting activities where parents and kids see their views are now aligning to demand normalcy. The suffer, after two years of suffering, we're learning that the kids really aren't all right. A lot of ways they continue to suffer emotionally, mentally, and socially with their peers while we live normal lives around them. Parents are now sharing stories about snack outside in frigid temperatures, kids that have to sit by themselves on the bus, not being able to drink water in class without permission, mask holdings, hearing or being understood in class, not being able to go to the whiteboard because it's in the front of the classroom close to a teacher, required PCR test because the mask is wet from a sneeze, eating lunch with the same person every day, or being reminded not to give a hug or a high five when a student slips up and does this. Bliss goes on and on. It's not normal. With every update from Dr. Ackerman on state or county guidance, we simply seem like an order taker two years into this when the game has changed significantly. The default safety first line used by government and some school officials is now equivalent to childhood loss in many ways. Request extension for one minute.
Do I have a motion to extend the speaker's time by one minute?
I move.
One second. All in favor? You have an extra minute.
Thank you. Let's not sit on our hands until August waiting for the state or county guidance leaving educators and students in limbo or willingly accept some twenty twenty-two plan that's released when we clearly know it has faults upon publication. Let's get ahead of this. Proactively work with the community to understand where the key concerns reside. Propose a solution and push back. Let's try to control our destiny or someone else will continue to do so. I have a feeling this time around, you're going to get more support in the community and other districts may end up following our lead. Thank you for the time.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, thank you. That moves us to approvals and ratifications. Did anybody want to say anything? Um, can I have a motion, please, for three point one and three point two, which are the minutes of prior board meeting?
I'll move three point one, three point two.
My second. All in favor, please say aye. Okay, then three point three is our second reading and potential adoption of policy fifty twenty-eight. I will move fifty twenty-eight, or I will move three point three with the tally.
I'll second that.
Okay, so this is, do you want to speak to this?
This is just, as a reminder, we have a free and reduced lunch program, but we're not able to offer free breakfast underneath that umbrella because of our participation rates. So we wanted to provide a way for us to do that for students who need it, particularly at the elementary school level. So this language gives us the opportunity to do so.
I can't, I can't hear you, Kristen. So sorry.
Want to repeat that?
I'll repeat it.
Or just, okay. So this is just a reminder, we have a free and reduced lunch program and under the umbrella of that is free breakfast. But because of our participation rates, we're not able to provide that. But we have students who need breakfast in the morning. So we've changed some language within our policies who we're able to provide breakfast to the patient who needs it.
Basically says in order to support an additional and academic student, school buildings that do not otherwise operate a breakfast program and provide free package healthy breakfast items to students who qualify for a free or reduced breakfast lunch. So it basically closes the gap that we have.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor of three point three?
Absolutely.
Okay, that brings us to three point four. Again, this is a second reading and proposed adoption of policy ninety twenty-seven. I will move three point four.
Okay. Okay, so this, this policy adjustment is just to provide clarity on who can access coverage when they're actively employed in the district in terms of health insurance and subsidies. So Andrew had suggested we write additional language just so people are very clear on when they can and cannot access health insurance as employees in our district.
Basically saying you can only access health insurance if you're an active member of that employee.
Correct.
All in favor of three point four, please say aye.
All right.
Okay, that brings us to three point five, which is the first reading of policy thirty twenty. And motion for three point five.
I'll move three point five.
I'll second three point five.
Okay, so this policy was brought to us by the Health and Safety Committee. So does someone on the Health and Safety Committee want to talk about the adjustments that were recommended from the Health and Safety Committee to the Policy Committee?
Yes, I think, yeah, I know, and, and just welcome, Andrew. Yeah, Andrew had talked about it a little bit last time after, because I think our last meeting was right after our last Health and Safety Committee meeting. These are some changes just to uplift, up, update, excuse me, our policy and clean up the language, make it very clear that there's no, nothing, no longer required called a, just a report card, an annual report card. They've changed the methodology by with, by which we need to, you know, report back in terms of how our buildings are doing, health and safety, et cetera, who, who the members of the committee are. It's just clarity in terms of what our committee does and what its roles are. And we felt that the language could be cleaned up. Are there specific things that you guys had also talked about?
Right, we, we also talked about making sure there's a complaint provision that needs to be in this according to regulations. So we articulated that very clearly within the policy. So people knew what to do if they wanted to file one. This is just the first reading. So usually in our first reading, the board, if you have any suggestions in the moment or that, or after reviewing the policy, you'd send those to Hillary, Warren and I. And then when we meet again as a policy committee, before we bring it back to the board for consideration for adoption, we could make those adjustments.
I think there was something added in there to make sure that we, that the committee is updated in terms of capital projects. I, I'm not sure that that was originally in there, but we wanted some clarity there because we've done a lot of work throughout the years. We wanted to make sure that there were periodic check-ins on some of our capital projects as well.
Right, thank you. All right, so that was the first reading. So now I recommend four point one instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item four point one.
I will second that. Questions, concerns? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Recommend four point two non-instructional as presented.
I move that we reckon, we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item four point two.
All in favor? Any questions? All in favor?
Bye.
So that brings us to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any.
may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that we approve the following consent agenda, but let me start by asking, is there anything that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Can I, can I please have a motion for items 5.1 through 5.4?
I'll move the consent agenda.
One second. Any questions? All in favor, please say I?
Hi.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, for item 6.1, which is in agreement with Hyman for the author of that? I'll move 6.1.
I'll second.
Um. I know that there was a community member raised a concern with this contract. Can we just get some clarification? Because to me, this seems like a a contract to bring an author to the schools and not for curriculum. Can we just get some clarification on that?
Yep, go ahead. Yes.
So this specific author is someone who is going to be keynoting Unity Day for our high school students, and he has done some work with our kids already. So that's what that is specifically for that event.
Thank you. Does anybody have any question, Dickie there?
No, I mean, we're we're now doing so.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Okay, that brings us to facilities. We are acknowledging, I guess this is oh, we don't have any of them. Okay, great. So that brings us to notice of future meetings. Um, our next meeting will be Wednesday, January 26th at 7:30 here. And we will have, we are planning on having student presentations from Bell, and really, we are really optimistic that that can happen. Those are in-person presentations, so we're really hoping we can have the kids here. So and then our our next meeting after that is Wednesday, February 9th at 7:30. And that will be here. And then we will have the Greeley, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's the Bell presentation on the 26th and then the Greeley presentation on February 9th. It is now 8:55 PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:55 PM?
I move that we adjourn at 8:56 PM.
I will second that. All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Thank you.